Oh, I didn't go through the package yet, but I received the package.
Okay. Good evening. Seeing that the appointed time has arrived and that we have quorum, the Chair opens up the Mashpee Planning Board meeting on Wednesday, September 7th, 2022, here in the Waukawat Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts. The time is 7:00. Just like to remind everybody that we're being videographed and recorded. We're being broadcast live on local Channel 18 and streamed live on Town of Mashpee website, https://www.mashpma.gov/channeled-18. I'd like to start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. First item is approval of minutes from August 17th, 2022.
Second?
Any comments or corrections? Seeing none, I recognize the motion and the second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, abstaining? Okay, great, it passes. We're going to skip to new business. We do have a public hearing at 7:10, and we'll open up that at 7:10. New Business, vote to set public hearing dates for zoning articles submitted for the October 2022 Town Meeting and related public announcement and presentation to the Board of Selectmen on September 12, 2022. I understand you. So I'm on the first item under New Business. Vote to set public hearing dates for zoning articles submitted for the October 2022 Town Meeting and related public announcement and presentation to the Select Board on September 12, 2022. Go ahead, Evan. Yeah, thank you.
Few scheduling-related matters we first need to address relative to the public hearing for zoning articles currently under review by the Select Board for inclusion on the warrant. Our regular scheduled meeting in October the 1st would have fallen on October 5th, which is the second day of Yom Kippur. We opted back at the time of our scheduling to not schedule a meeting for that date because there are no public meetings on that date. So we would need to schedule a special meeting for this public hearing, and I am suggesting a Thursday evening, the 29th, at 7:00 p.m. If you could set the public hearing at the appropriate time. I don't know if there would be other things in the agenda if you just want to do the public hearing.
I think we should just do the public hearing.
So you could start every day at 7:03 or 7:02 or something like that, 7:00, whatever.
I think we should just do the public hearing. So we're not going to meet on October 5th?
Correct.
And nothing else got scheduled, right?
Correct.
Okay, good. So how's Thursday, September 29th, 7:00 for everybody?
Yes.
Okay, good. So I need a motion to set our public hearing regarding our proposed zoning bylaw amendments, to set that for Thursday, September 29th, at 7:00.
Can I just, why wouldn't we do it at our meeting on the 21st?
In September?
Yeah.
I don't have time for the advertised.
Oh.
And the Select Board still hasn't executed the warrant, which is why I haven't advertised it yet, but at this point, I'd like to schedule the public hearing. I do want to note just one thing in my calendar. Earlier in the evening is the Coombe School Open House that we would like to have a table at on that same evening. It is prior to 7:00. But I don't know if we want to consider an alternative day, an alternative time, to give us enough distance between the closure of that event. And I would be planning on attending that event and would be inviting any of you all to participate with me, but I think it is important we have a table there. And we can certainly do both. I just wanted to make you aware of that potential commitment as well.
What time does that?
It happened in my calendar at 6:00 p.m.
I don't have my calendar with me. I don't know what other date I'd be available.
Well, I think we can proceed with 7:00 or 7:15 or something like that. It's more than enough time.
Do you want to do 7:15?
Sure.
Is that okay? Whoever made the motion and amended it, is that okay? All right, so 7:15, and...
What's September, what, 29th?
29th, a Thursday.
Yeah.
And perhaps, you know, you can set up the table and start it off?
Absolutely.
And maybe there might be a volunteer from the community that's facilitated for us that would continue sitting at the table after 7:00?
Perfect.
Does that sound okay?
It does.
All right. All right, so we've a motion and a second for Thursday, September 29th, at 7:15. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed or abstaining? Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. So is that all for that first bullet item?
Anything you wanted to mention relative to the public service announcements in the presentation to the Select Board?
So, right, so the first and second bullet are kind of like almost the same. They overlap. So the Planning Board is going to be present on September 12th to present the two zoning bylaw, proposed zoning bylaw amendments to the Board of Selectmen. That's the night that they're closing their warrant, and at the last meeting, they said that they wanted people who had proposed the zoning bylaws, or the bylaws, because zoning bylaws is a subsection of that, to be present on the 12th to answer questions. So Evan is on vacation. So Karen and I are available that night to go. We have the PSA from Evan to show. How long is that?
Three and a half minutes or so.
Oh, good. So I'm going to try to arrange that to be shown. We might have some PowerPoint slides, and we'd have an information packet on them. And hopefully, that's enough for the, hopefully, we can deal with any questions they have to get the two proposed zoning bylaw amendments on the warrant.
So that I'm clear, is Evan's PSA, the floodplain proposed bylaw, an LID?
The Low Impact Development bylaw, which changes it from encouraged to required, and it has a little bit more specification that it's, it's supposed to remove nutrients such as nitrogen and phosphorus. It actually names those nutrients out. And when do we have to have those materials into the Town Manager's office?
For the 12th, I believe it's the Thursday prior to their meeting, that Terry likes how the packets complete.
That's tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
Did you identify any low-impact development information?
I actually met this today with the Stormwater Task Force?
Yeah.
Who, similarly to Fussin' O'Neill for the San Tuhupon Project, made recommendations for this program year that mirrored exactly the strategy that Fussin' O'Neill had, which is the deviation from encouraged to require, and made similar recommendations with regard to standards. And they cited in their report to the town, a number of resources actually from Autobahn, which provides a bunch of guidance relative to low-impact design strategies. So I can forward that to the board if that would be of interest.
May I?
Well, so, yeah, I think we need to get something into the Board of Selectmen's packet.
Sure. I can provide that.
I think some general information about low-impact development?
I'll send them exactly the resources I just referenced.
And I think you did some FAQs on it already?
I'm not sure I have.
Okay.
Mary, what is, what do we have to present to the Town Manager's office tomorrow?
They need any items that you would like included in their packet the Thursday prior to the Monday meeting. So I want to just be providing those resources I referenced.
What would it be, the details of the speech?
Well, I think Mary's suggesting that we want to...
Well, I'm on the low-impact development one. So I wanted to give them some general information about what is low-impact development. That Fussin' O'Neill has recommended it. There's another engineering firm that's...
Who does our MS4 permitting, yes.
You could write that up for them and give them as a quote?
Yeah.
And then put that in the Selectmen's packet along with the low-impact development bylaw.
Would it be adequate just to have the proposed floodplain bylaw?
So we'll get to that in a second, the floodplain. So does that sound agreeable to everybody? So it's what our current engineers are recommending. A general, you know, I sent you a link to what the EPA.gov had. You know, it's just a basic explainer what is low-impact development. And then, of course, the bylaw change they already have.
Could we get a copy, when you send it to the Town Manager, can you copy us?
Yes, I can.
Yeah, that would be good.
I want to read it to see what it is.
Now, regarding the other proposed zoning bylaw, has to do with the floodplain, right? So they already have the proposed floodplain amendment, the proposed amendment to the floodplain bylaw. But I think we should give them the text of the PSA.
Okay.
Right? And then you wrote out some FAQs. And the FAQs are kind of like, how many lots does this impact?
Yeah.
You know, does it make any, does it make any of these lots unbuildable? Just kind of like the basic questions, you know, you know, if I'm already built?
Yeah.
What happens to my, do I have to knock down my house? We know, no. The answer is no. But, you know, people ask those questions.
Yep, that's manageable. We can take care of that.
Is that good?
Yeah. Yeah. More explanation.
Yeah.
Then it'd be easier to get by, you know, the pass.
Does anybody else want to come on the 12th?
I probably will.
I'm going to try, yeah.
So I don't know if we have to post that we're going to be there in quorum or not. I have no idea.
I will find that out, and if we do, I will post an agenda.
Yeah. So. And then we're having a trial run this Saturday at the Pompanessett Beach Association Meeting, 10:00 a.m. on the 10th. So Karen and I are going.
I'll try and show up.
Okay, so we'd have quorum then. So we just need to...
Yeah, I'm not going.
Okay, we just need to have, we just need to post that...
I can't be there.
The Planning Board may be in quorum at this meeting, and the, why we're there is to make that presentation, and we're not going to deal with any other business.
All right.
Do you want to come, Michael?
I don't know for sure.
Oh, okay. All right.
I'm right around the corner, but...
So it's going to be the same thing. We'll show the PSA. We might have a PowerPoint to show with the FAQs, and maybe the map of the floodplain in that area. And then answer questions the best we can, and any questions we can't answer, we'll write down and send to Evan.
We also have David Marks present, who may be able to answer, who will be able to answer anything.
And for the general public, who is he?
He is the Building Commissioner of Mashpee.
All right.
So is anybody invited to this, or is this the people?
It's the...
It's the PBA community only.
Okay, good. Because I would want like, I figured the real estate people...
Oh, there's quite a few that live there. Oh, yeah.
They're going to be the hardest ones to convince, in my opinion, but...
Right. And it might be something that we'll have to have a, you know, a prep meeting. If it gets on the warrant, well, we can have some, we can do this here on a Wednesday night in preparation for town meeting.
Okay.
Oh, we'll have the public hearing.
Yeah.
We're going to have the public hearing.
Correct.
So we can show the PSA and go over the FAQs
Yeah.
at the public hearing. How does that sound?
Sounds good to me.
Good? Is there anything else under New Business that we need to address, Evan?
Sorry.
I think we've covered both of those items.
No, we're all set, Mary.
Okay. Seeing that the appointed time has arrived, the Chair opens up the 7:10 public hearing. The applicant is Marcelo Malagni, Forest Road LLC. The location, is it 523?
It's 532, isn't it, 23?
No, 532 Main Street, MAP 26 Block 6. The applicant requests consideration for approximately, sorry, for approval of a nine-lot definitive subdivision plan of land consisting of approximately 18.05 acres located on Main Street, Route 130 in Mashpee, between Nicoletta Way, Nicoletta's Way and Echo Road. And we have correspondence dated September 7th, 2022. Dear Ms. Wagan, Chairwoman Mashpee Planning Board, 16 Great Neck Road, Mashpee, Mass., regarding 532 Route 130, dear Chairwoman Wagan, as you know, we represent the owner of the property referenced above. So this is from Attorney Christopher J. Corain. It is requested that tonight's hearing be continued to September 22nd, 2022, to allow the applicant and the owners of Nicoletta Way to finalize their agreement to allow the applicant to use Nicoletta's Way as access. I have attached correspondence from the attorney for the owners of Nicoletta's Way indicating that he was working on the agreement and would turn it around this week.
Pretty clear.
Yes, good evening.
Just wanted to check in. The ball is in my court. Okay.
Yeah, thanks. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Attorney Christopher Corain. Hoping to, was hoping to be here telling you that we were, you know, we were across the finish line, but we're not quite there yet. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, as I say, the attorney is the attorney for the owners of Nicoletta's Way, who said, the ball's in my court, I'll turn it around. So my client's ready to go. He wants to get this done, but we're not quite there yet. So, you know, we appreciate the Board's patience on this. I think we are going to get there, you know, and I'm hoping that that's, it will happen before the next meeting. I don't, I've got my fingers crossed I won't have to come back. So I thank you for your consideration.
Okay, so I take a motion to continue this public hearing to September 21st, 2022, at 7:10.
So be.
Okay, Dennis made the motion, and Michael seconded it. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining? Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Have a great night.
Say, Ernie.
Local Comprehensive Plan updates. Evan?
Beta test. I've been told today that you'll have the survey on Friday. I did go through it one time. There were a number of typos and various things like that that needed to be corrected. It did not take me a substantial amount of time. It did take others unfamiliar with the content more time than it took me, is what I would like to say. So I would like you all to pay particular attention to response time.
How much time did it take?
Took me 20 minutes.
Okay.
That was significantly better than the average. And so I think there are some formatting things we can work on to make sure it flows better. I found the biggest issue for me at this point, this juncture, which you'll see on Friday, is that my familiarity with the scales we are asking about, you know, agree, disagree, you know, made my ability to respond much more rapid. I feel like someone who has to continuously check back to see what they're looking at is going to take more time. I think that's the issue. So we should probably be looking at opportunities to reduce. And so you'll have it on Friday. I apologize, it's taken a little bit longer. Apparently, Weston and Sampson's Human Resources controls the Survey Monkey account because they have confidential information for their HR purposes there, and only one person can edit it. And it's been a lot of back and forth to deal with my changes. So we'll provide you the link on Friday before I leave on vacation. We'll still be shooting for a launch of this in the end of the month.
And this is the link for friends and family?
Yes, for you and anyone you'd like to share it with to give us feedback on. Formatting aside, and length of time, I mean, the one thing I feel good about is that I feel like every question serves a valuable purpose that we're asking, so it becomes harder to narrow. So we'll do what we can with format, and then we'll get it in your hands this week so we can, so you can tell us what you think is best before we launch.
Now, we can see the finish line, so that's good.
Yes.
But as it is to do, the better results we're going to get out of this.
Yeah, I think we need to cut some time out of it, no doubt.
I know if I was doing it, it's not getting too long, I would say.
I want to, the one thing is, I think if we can make it logical for people to stop and save and go back, but that takes, many people have to use multiple days. There are things we need to consider. We'll probably, you know, follow up with you with written suggestions and let you tell us where to go.
Okay.
Okay.
Workshops and focus groups.
So we were supposed to be meeting this upcoming Sunday, the 11th, or at least other colleagues of ours at the Tribal Government Center for the General Membership Meeting this month. I contacted the tribal representatives last week to confirm details and discuss a little bit about our intentions regarding format, et cetera, how the meeting is operated. And they let me know that the likelihood is that they'll need to reschedule this event again. They proposed a date, I believe, of Sunday, September 25th. I'm hopeful that we can make sure that that event happens because we are reaching the point where we need to close the community engagement. And I've communicated as much with the Chairman and his colleagues. So we'll look at 9:25, and we have the framework. We know how we're going to operate this, the meeting. We know how we'll be presenting information and what types of conversations we'd like to have. But we'll need to confirm the 25th opportunity to proceed. So no meeting with the General Membership on the 11th.
Any reason why it keeps getting...
I was told for this one, the August meetings were canceled for COVID-related reasons after powwow. They shut down the Government Center. A few rescheduleings didn't work out. I'm not 100% certain why, but on the...
I've been told it's lack of quorum.
And then for this, I was told for this upcoming workshop, they're discussing budget, and they need to set their budget for the upcoming fiscal year. And something in the Charter or Constitution does not allow conversation on any other topic at the General Membership Meeting if the agenda pertains to the budget. And they need to deal with the budget.
Wow, okay.
So that's on that. I will, you know, as soon as I hear something back. I will, I'll be back on the 25th, which I'm pleased about. I would have missed this also this weekend, so hopefully that works out. For virtual workshops, I'm finalizing some materials...
Can I just ask you, you being away, how will we know if we're meeting on the 25th or not?
I'll be checking email. You'll hear from me on that, in that regard.
All right, thank you.
Regarding virtual workshops, we are looking at the final two weeks in September for a general virtual workshop, and then a workshop for parents and students, or parents of school-aged children and their students. The general virtual workshop is going to be on, oh, I'm proposing to do that on October 6th because I'm worried the week prior, we will not have enough time to advertise. And we're starting to have a busy week that week of September. So if you're okay with pushing that event till October 6th, and that being the close of our engagement, that's what I'm proposing for that. For the parents of school-aged children...
That's not a religious holiday?
The 6th?
The 6th, no, the 5th is the, it's the 4th and the 5th.
All right.
The 6th, yeah, that's the Thursday before the long weekend.
Yes.
So that's a Thursday?
Yes.
And we, do we want to do it, what time do we want to do it?
I'm proposing 6:30 to 8:30. Same times for the Parents of School-Aged Children event, which was going to be on September 26th. That's a Monday. I've run this by the schools. They're comfortable with that. They have no conflicting events. I'm, in addition to the other items in preparation, I'm preparing packages to go home to, into every classroom with a flyer that looks like this.
Yeah, that's cool.
Something like that, and a letter that is going home to parents from my office that the superintendent has reviewed, inviting them to participate in this. And again, we'll have the open houses over the next few weeks to, you know, also try and get people to spend some time with us on the 26th. So survey, those two workshops...
I'm sorry, what date was the open houses?
I'll have to look at my calendar, Mary.
Okay, sorry, okay.
You have to look at my calendar. I'm not always so certain.
Now, if you have students coming, do we have a way to put them into, are we going to include them just with everybody, or are we going to have a special breakout?
I think if they want to sit with their mom or dad, it'll probably just be parents.
Okay.
But I figured we would invite the students as well.
Okay.
That behave better, too.
That's right.
The parents?
Yeah.
And so...
Okay, so I think you need to send us out a calendar soon, huh?
Yeah, yeah. We have a bunch, you know, this is kind of the last push. I wanted to get this all organized before I leave. So with the workshops, with hopefully the tribal event on the 25th?
5th.
And survey, that'll bring us into the next phase of the plan development.
Lovely.
I think the last remaining item that we'll want to, I think, schedule probably for October is like working on the vision statement.
Oh, right, yeah.
And I'll come back to you with that. We'll probably want to invite Ashley to come and go through the responses and everything we've learned and the 1998 vision statement and start coming up with proposals.
Okay, so anything else about the LCP? Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on the Local Comprehensive Plan? Hi, Lynn.
Hi, Lynn Barbie Surf Drive. I just wanted to check, we're planning on doing a paper survey as well as the online?
For, we'll be suggesting that folks who want to do, fill out in paper and submit in paper, to notify us or pick it up at the library or the senior center, or just write me an email, and I'll mail it to your house, or you can pick it up at Town Hall.
Okay, because I had...
As opposed to a mailer out to everyone.
I'd actually talked to Kathy at the library at one point, and she said, oh, yeah, we could have them here in a box for them to sit down and do it and leave it with us.
Yes.
Because I do know that there were, there are people who don't go online.
Yes, that's the intention. So we won't be mailing to all the households, but we will make it available.
But we can post the information out that you can get it online. Okay.
Exactly.
Great, that's wonderful. Thank you.
Okay. Next item is Affordable Housing and Workforce Housing. And unless somebody has something to add, I don't. I don't think we've, we've set any date for an ADU workshop.
No, not this...
And I haven't heard back from the Affordable Housing Committee, from my June email, asking them to coordinate stuff. And I'll leave the CPA stuff, the Community Preservation Program, for the later report. And then the Clean Water Initiative, I think that that's all we're working on with the proposed amendments to the zoning bylaw, the visit to the Pompanessett Beach Association, and our meeting with the Board of Selectmen. Does anybody have anything from, yes, Evan?
I just wanted to, when I was last at the Select Board to present the submitted articles floodplain and the low-impact design requirement and criteria for stormwater management, I feel like they, because you had all at your last meeting voted on that one paragraph change, but we had also submitted the, like some specific design criteria that we were looking for by recommendation of Fussin' O'Neill, and they said they wanted us to bring it to you if you had any comments. I just wanted to make sure we had the opportunity to...
Do we have that on our, was it in our packet?
The articles are in your packet, yes. Again, this was, we had proposed in the same section for stormwater management, going to a requirement for low-impact design as opposed to encourage you to do so. And so when I was reviewing the Fussin' O'Neill report that was submitted to DNR, and now also the tie-in bond report, it seemed prudent, if we were going to require low-impact design strategies, we should clarify what specific design criteria should be incorporated in those things. So that's what's proposed, just to provide some specificity for those strategies.
So where do we find that, Evan?
So you'll see three articles right in your second page. To amend 17427.2A, that's the switch to requirement. On the back of that page, amend 17427.2B2 by adding new subsections D and E after that subsection. And that just provides additional, this doesn't take anything away. It adds two new subsections for, you know, if you're, if you're, for rain gardens, et cetera, for these filtering best management practices. What do you need to do if you're going to employ bio retention or similar filtration at for stormwater sites? And then these climate resilience design standards, they need to comply with the climate resilient design standards. And then there's the last... And then there's the last one, which, and that's specific to single and two-family homes. The last one is very similar article that deals with the commercial and industrial projects. So in that longer article, it's only the additions of the VI and the VII, the six and the seven, that is new and added. So again, this is just adding the criteria for projects that employ bio-retention, what they need to comply with.
Okay, so the second low-impact develop, so the first low-impact development article just changes the word shall be encouraged to shall be required, right?
Yeah, there's, it's slightly more nuanced than how I made the edit, but you'll see it in bold, but it's essentially what it, it's effectively what it does, yes.
So the second low-impact development by law change, D and E are new paragraphs?
Correct, that's correct.
Right, new, right.
So you incorporate filter media and/or an internal water storage zone to optimize nitrogen and phosphorus removal for projects which employ bio-retention or similar filtering best management practices, i.e. rain gardens, tree filters, sand slash organic filters, and dry water quality swales. End parenthesis for treatment prior to infiltration, so that's D. Then the new paragraph E evaluates and designs new stormwater quality control BMPs, which is?
Best management practices.
And other drainage system components in accordance with the Resilient Massachusetts Action Team Climate Resilient Design Standard and Guidelines, as amended, to account for projected increases in precipitation intensity and frequency over duration for the useful life of the system. So that's, so there's a Massachusetts format that gives guidance on estimating how future precipitation increases?
Yes, and there was, suggested that we should define like an actual ratio for increases, which I didn't include because I didn't have data to make a logical estimate, but we might wanna be thinking about that in the future, like how, how much more, how much of an increase in precipitation should we be designing for, 10%, 20%, 30%, et cetera. It's been suggested that 20% is adequate, but I'm, I'm not.
But there is, there is an active Resilient Massachusetts Action Team.
Yes.
Do you know if that's, that's under the governor?
No, I don't know.
Okay, all right. And then the third one, what is new in the third one?
It's the exact same language, it's the VI and the VII, six and seven. That one, the longer one, the VI and the VII pertain to commercial, industrial, and multifamily residential projects. The one previous, it deals with single and two-family dwellings.
Oh, forgot to say that again, wait a minute.
So the language in, for the DE and the VI and VII are identical additions, just in varying sections of the Stormwater Management Bylaw, one dealing with single-family dwellings, the other dealing with larger projects.
Okay, thank you. So I'm game, what do you guys think?
I think it's good.
I was looking at some stuff, and this kind of change would, would, you know, have more design in it than if it was not required, but I think that the benefits to the town are pretty important.
Yeah, and if it wasn't, if it wasn't this town meeting, it would probably be the next based on all the recommendations our, my colleagues are receiving from. So it is prudent, these are prudent changes and implementable, no doubt.
Can you give us a quote in, like in a memo?
If you'd like one.
Just 'cause you're not gonna be there, so.
Yeah, I can provide something, sure.
All right.
And these are engineer, I mean, the engineers have recommended these to you.
Yes, and they, these written, these are, these recommendations are consistent between two different reports for separate projects, both dealing with stormwater, so seems to be the prudent approach, both for MS4 stormwater permit, but also dealing with climate resilience for water quality around St. Louis Pond.
Can I ask a question real quick, Mike?
Yeah.
So I have the Fussin' O'Neill report, what's the other report?
It was, it's in draft form, but should be released shortly, and I could probably email the electronic copy to the board, but again, the, you might recall, we did stormwater amendments, the bylaw for the MS4 EPA stormwater permit. We're in program year five of that permit now, and the upcoming program, the deliverables for this upcoming year include bylaw review, and obviously some potential modifications in for this particular year, they made the recommendation to go from encouraged to require.
Send us that report, that draft report.
Will do.
Go ahead, Mike, what do you got? Do you have a question?
No, no, no.
Oh.
I have a question. What's the difference between a flood zone and a velocity zone?
A velocity zone is one, it's the most restrictive flood area that you can potentially develop in.
So that's right.
It's right on the coast where you're dealing with the highest risk for flood, wind, and flood and wind damage or structural integrity loss.
So, but that is, with the exception of dredged material for beaches, so I can't put no material in that?
No, that's an exception, so we're saying like, if you're in a velocity zone and you have an existing permitted, like armoring, armored coastal bank, or you have some sort of beach, or you have a jetty of some sort, if you have all the appropriate permits in place, the material used to facilitate such a project is exempt from the prohibition.
Okay.
So you can do that.
Thanks.
So we're gonna hold on public comment on this because we're gonna have an official public hearing, so I'd rather take your comments than.
Unless you want to say something.
I know, is that why you came?
I, I've come to educate myself.
Okay, all right, yeah.
But what, I'm only chuckling because it's like, all right, the, the understanding of what he's presenting, I'm just trying to follow the process, and that's all. So when you say a public hearing, I'm hoping that more education and research is done so I can answer these questions.
Well, I think, and I think that too, Evan's doing that with his PSA and helping us with a PowerPoint, I think it will be, okay. So are we done with everything in old business, Evan?
We are.
Okay. Any other comments under old business? Chairman's report, just, just, you know, getting ready for the meeting with the Board of Selectment on the 12th, I've been talking with the vice chair and the town planner on that. Relying heavily on the vice chair and the town planner on that, so thank you. That's my chairman's report, town planning report.
I have nothing, thank you all for your, your commitment and your time.
Board members committee report, Cape Cod Commission, I, I don't have anything. Oh, Ernie's gone. Community Preservation Committee, we met last week, and we voted to have an appraisal done of seven, of the, is it eight acres?
Yes.
At 7:51 Route 130. So hopefully in preparation for May town meeting. So that should be good. We're gonna also have a public hearing on October 6th. Is that one of our dates?
Yes.
What were you planning on for October 6th?
October 6th was the virtual workshop.
Okay, well.
6:30 to 8:30.
Maybe else suggests that the CPA public hearing starts at 5:30, I don't know.
Well, and I also have an advertiser scheduled yet, so if we need to look for an alternative date for that, I can, I can accommodate it.
Oh, no, let's, you know.
Try to run through them.
Go forward, I'm not, I'm not, all right. Yeah, I might, I just might not be there, or I might be late. Not a big deal. Design review.
No meeting.
Plan review.
No meeting.
Environmental Oversight Committee.
No meeting, but we're being reconstituted, which is.
Hey, good, okay. Historic District Commission.
Meet tomorrow.
Hey, all right.
See you bright and early.
I'm ready.
Hover Management Plan Committee.
Never heard of that.
Not yet, okay, just keep on Chris, I'm sure, I'm sure that that will. Anybody sign up for public comment, or would anybody like to make public comment? Just come right up to the mic.
Joe Bennett from Gunter's Lane, and I'm intrigued in what Evan was talking about, and I'm thinking, does it have to do with what we were talking about at the last meeting with like mitigation plantings and stormwater runoff and stuff, or is this something totally, like what was just being discussed here?
The low-impact development?
Yes.
Yeah.
Are they linked together in that previous discussion along with the research that you're doing and the people that have spent a fair amount of time actually, you know?
I would suppose it's, it's related, however, unlike something in a conservation jurisdiction where if you disturb here, then you must replace, according to these design standards with X number of species or whatever, native plantings, et cetera, what we're trying to accomplish is for the stormwater management itself, not necessarily requiring any mitigation plantings or anything, but directing stormwater in a fashion whereas it's, it's directed towards vegetated or grassed areas so that there's some amount of nutrient removal being taken up by the vegetation itself, and also being filtered through the organic material and the sand before it infiltrates to groundwater, just as a preventative measure to mitigate potential nutrient loading impacts to nearby water bodies. It also slows stormwater runoff, it helps with erosion control, et cetera, so that's what we're trying to accomplish.
So it's gonna go from here to a public hearing?
So for any zoning article that is submitted by this board, this Select Board, or the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Massachusetts Zoning Act requires the planning board to hold a public hearing and make a recommendation to town meeting. So sometime prior to every town meeting, if there's a zoning article under consideration, the planning board will advertise a public hearing at least two weeks prior to that public hearing, both in the local newspaper, on the postings here in Town Hall, and that public hearing, the board will obviously take public comment, they'll deliberate, close a public hearing and make a recommendation to town meeting either to recommend approval or to not recommend approval, or to take no action. So that's, every article that ever would go to town meeting would follow that process.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other public comment? Okay, there's correspondence in your packet, I don't see any other topic, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, second.
Favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Couldn't eat them.